I am recording, we'll see what it picks up.
Okay.
All right, we will move on to construction and right of way.
We have one request for construction of the road right of way. Hancock County would like to get an overhead light. On, it's a work pavement near Corwood, an intersection near Corwood, which would require electricity so they Midland Power Cooperative is running a mile of electricity between section twenty-five and twenty-four of Laverne Township in the right of way of one hundred and twentieth street. And I would recommend that the board would approve of this request.
After you, we have a motion.
I'm second.
Motion by Stecker, second by Garmin. We're just in construction right of way, but you don't have to keep notes if you don't want to.
Okay.
I'll just use the agenda and we'll leave that there. All right, we have motion and second on the floor. Any discussion? Very none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Is that all right of way now?
That is all requests for work in the road right of way. It'd be this line right there Josh. And then that contractor, I'll get that dated and all too, there's a couple of different spots need to be signed.
You'll put the date down?
Yeah, I'll get it all dated. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Leads us up to discussion.
Uh, yeah, mathy construction with the asphalt construction, they have completed all the pavement scarification. They are in the process of starting to move plant to the earth we can grab a pit. And they will be resurfacing, it sounds like starting next week, and that would be down on B fifty-five in Laverne Township. Bridge construction north of Sexton, the bridge has been removed and the contractor is beginning to prepare to drive the south, what would be the south pier pile. They are doing that. Slur leveling was completed up around the Taitanka area, they are working now on P thirty between B nineteen and A forty-two, that's Lone Rock, and also B sixty-three between the west county line and US one sixty-nine, so they're west banned and going east. And crack filling, Blacktop Service has just a little bit more work to do and they'll be completed. They are on P thirty, a little bit north of eighteen they have left, and then everything's south of B sixty-three. Next week, I believe, is the annexation and road crossing hearing. Is there any plan to have any legal, anybody, any attorney here to answer questions if there are some? One question I have is what?
A hearing for which district?
This would be the annexation of voluntary into
One thirty-three, one thirty-three.
Yeah.
The responsibility for the road crossing. The way the the code reads is they, there needs to be determined what is adequate. And I believe that they are planning to bring in a pretty good sized tile, it's probably greater than a half inch coefficient. They have some drainage right now, because they are in the drainage district and it's dialed runs there. So what is, if, who determines what size pipe goes through or what the county road department would be responsible for?
Did you reach out to Hudson at all on that after we had spoken about?
I have talked, but I haven't, I have not hired him to come up to do anything or be present.
You talked to him though?
I have visited with him a little bit about this situation.
Okay, what did he gather or did you want to say from talking to him?
Well, it was pretty general. Um, he says that the board of supervisors, because they are, they have jurisdiction of the road have certain rights. The trustees of the drain, they have, which again, in this case is to become board supervisors.
We will be trustees of the drain?
You guys are trustees of the drain where it's outletting into.
Right, okay, okay.
You guys have responsibility and jurisdiction there. We were just talking about a drain, it was in the previous hearing, there was a drainage district that is outletting into a, another drainage district that is not even being assessed for anything. The way I understood at least that conversation, because they were talking about a new schedule and including those people, so there's things that, there's processes that need to be done, need to be completed in order to make sure that everybody, that it's done correctly.
So, I think I asked you this already, is there a appreciable difference between a twenty-four and a thirty inch bore as far as cost?
Yeah, but I think they're looking at forty-eight or fifty-four. Which are, it's a lot greater than
Both are very expensive.
Yeah. Twenty-four is, I mean, it's substantially greater to get into those forty-eight and larger.
So they thought they had steel casing then?
Yeah, so you.
And there was a plastic tile thing within there?
No, it actually is
Couples?
Yeah, there's a couple that they were onto.
So what do you think we should do?
Well, I, I think I would like to have somebody here to answer any questions, legal questions that I would have, I guess. And that is one of them, I, I don't know. And, and I have talked with Colin, who's working for the Chirlins. My understanding is this, what is being designed is greater than a half inch coefficient. And half inch coefficient is kind of the standard for drainage right now. You want your tile to be a half inch coefficient.
That's what Iowa State recommends, yeah.
Right, exactly.
So, have you talked to Tyler enough to, is that right?
Colin.
Colin.
This is a representative.
So, do what, what do, what do they want to do, or what, what would it take to provide a half inch?
I have not gotten any answers.
So, I don't know, I realize it's, okay.
And there's obviously, to me I think that this, what is being proposed is larger than a half inch coefficient.
Well, if you're gonna dig the hole, I, I would too.
Correct.
But, but
But then
What you're hinting at is that maybe they should pay for the extra?
Yeah, is, is the road department, even though they're, I mean, are they is the road department responsible for, no matter what, I mean, hell, they might want an inch and a half coefficient going through the road?
Right.
So that if they have other property to.
It's come up before?
No, this, this is the first time for me. Most of the people we have in our policy, they
This is different because they're doing it by the book or something or?
Correct, they're going through a different process, yeah.
They're specifically, they're switching from one drain to another for their subsurface water, so, and kind of like the improvement project we talked about before, they're, they're switching drains and doing a private improvement project. So yeah, it's all kind of rolled into one, but yeah, this would not be anything that I could compare it to.
But, but there's also something that we have a standard, we'll pay
Yes, we pay seventy percent of the bore, estimate the cost on bore.
But this is different because they're going by the book or something.
Yes. However, they, they are not providing all of the characteristics that I want, and I need to talk to Colin a little bit more about that also, but
What do you, what do you typically get or ask for that you have not gotten so far?
This is the first time it's happened. So, I have been visiting with Colin, I, I want, one thing I need to ask him for is what coefficient they have right now on the tile that they're going to be doing. I would be concerned a little bit if I were trustee of the drain coming in. They are going to be paralleling the it appears to me they're gonna be paralleling another drainage district facility. And whether that drainage district facility would be allowed to be connected to this other drain. And that's one question I need to ask. Well, I guess I don't need to ask because it's going under the road, but I'm a county engineer, but if that may or may not be a concern for trustees, I don't know.
So, so in this, with this project, I know they're, they're doing it on their own trying to get it in. Of course, we as the trustees want to do what's best for everyone, do we have, and they're being represented, you know, by McClure Engineering. Do we have anybody that
No, they're Jacobson West.
We talk to about it, or are we just you know, raking in the costs?
They're being represented by Jacobson West or Garden, we probably should
Oh, it wasn't McClure, I'm sorry, yeah.
No, yeah, it was not McClure, but we probably can and should have an engineer appointed to represent the drainage districts on behalf of the county, that would probably be a good
Engineer or attorney?
I think so too.
Well, both. I mean, I know we discussed the attorney as well previously, but we did not talk about having an engineer appointed to represent the, the district on behalf of the county yet, so that would be something that probably could be put on the agenda in conjunction with that discussion.
I don't know, I guess the more I hear, the, the more I feel like that, that probably needs to happen.
Yep.
When is that conversation supposed to happen?
Next week.
At eight o'clock.
So we could, we could talk about it, and if there's any action that's needed from there, whether it's appointing anyone or not, we could move forward with that. We don't have to take action to grant them anything next week. There's nothing high in our hands, so holding us against a wall, can you continue that conversation? I think the last time we had talked about the attorney aspect, I don't think anyone had any objections to.
Any assets, do they want to do the work now, or do they want to wait until after the project's out, or?
I don't know how.
I think they wanted to get going on it in general, but I don't know if this point in the year would change their feeling at all. But I know previously they wanted to get started.
Do you, do you, now?
In general, yeah.
Do you have a sense of their expectations that we pay a hundred percent for crossing?
Oh yeah, that's what they are
County, huh?
They, that's, yeah, they, they have stated that too.
You ever mention to them anything about what we would, what you feel might be fair?
Well, I have asked Colin what drainage coefficient this is being designed at, and we've had talked about coefficients, and and I think one of the questions is what is, what is adequate drainage?
That's what I said.
And, and I say, yeah, I say half inch, because that's what Iowa State University recommends. And there's always a counter to that point of view. And I don't know who who, who is the right person to determine that, so.
Well, if you're gonna have, my, my only thought was if you were gonna have an attorney here, maybe
Or on, I mean, I could certainly request Jim Hudson to be
Available?
Available by phone.
I, I think we had discussed that previously, I'm not sure if that was followed through on, so I think we can follow up after the meeting and make sure that that gets
Would, would you like me to call in and make sure that that happens?
That'd be fine, we can talk with Tammy afterwards too, but I know there's several things we were checking on and trying to confirm.
Okay.
So, I think that, yeah, I don't think anybody had any concerns at that point when we talked about it previously, about having him here or available and so.
All right. Um, the safe streets for, for all application needed, there needed to be an agreement signed, a couple of weeks ago I spoke with you about that grant process, I was asked, I was planning for the board to sign that last week. These things go kind of fast, I went ahead and signed it for Cassuth County. So, I hope that no one is offended by that, but I think it may give us some opportunity to get some federal dollars.
And that would already, need to be submitted already?
Oh yeah, that's, they're studying, it's, it's a minimal cost right now, five hundred dollars I think is what it's at. And if they develop more and get some applications, but they're studying our projects and trying to put together an evaluation, so. As you remember, we had a engineer in our office that left to go to another county. I have put out an application, or an advertisement for a technician and engineering lady. I also, we have an engineer, a licensed engineer in our office. He is a local boy, grew up in Cassuth County, local man. And he started working for the engineer's office in twenty seventeen, we had some retirements of some technicians at that time, and he was licensed to practice engineering at that time. At that time, I told him we would hire him as a technician, compensate him as a technician. I am planning on this fiscal year to move him to what would be Transportation Engineer Two, which our previous engineer was licensed, level one, pay scale one, and compensating him accordingly, so. I just want the board to know that.
Is that different than what was approved with budget?
We approved a budget that had a Transportation Engineer Two and a Technician Two. So, we had it budgeted. And we, and I'm advertising for a technician or engineering agent. I am asking for some equipment quotes, requested a quote for a nine fifty loader and four cat one forty motor graders are out, and they are to be the quotes are to be back to me Friday, and we will work, we'll review that with the board of supervisors next week and ask for approval of those purchases. We had a CHPP grant come out Thursday, June five. We received notification that there was competitive highway bridge program grant, thirty-two point five million dollars available to the state. They're trying to get eighty percent federal, twenty percent local. There were five hundred and sixty-three county bridges listed that preliminary they preliminarily fit the description for the competitive highway bridge program. We needed to reply, all counties needed to reply by June eleven if they wanted to, if they wanted to participate in this. Cassuth County had seven listed bridges. Our office, we, I think three of those bridges were actually either re- replaced or in the process of being replaced, and one of them, we did not feel comfortable replacing it. It's in good shape, but we did submit three bridges to be considered in the preliminary. Thursday, June twelfth, our, our office was notified that two of the three bridges submitted made the final list. So we have, we informed the grant committee that we are committed to the terms of the grant. We are right now starting to do preliminary work to get those projects going. One of them is a bridge to the east of Legyard, it was built in nineteen fifty-one, I believe, and the other one is the, it would be on P sixteen, north of A forty-two, going over the east fork of the Des Moines River. That bridge was actually built in nineteen seventy-three, however, there are abutment piling and high table abutments that are showing, showing at their age. We would anticipate about one point five million dollars per project. Both of these projects were in our five-year program. So, we are pleased that we are finding other funds for those, and we have a meeting at one thirty today or tomorrow that I will be attending and starting to returning information. If the board would like us to continue with this opportunity or not continue with this, I guess I should say if the board does not want me to continue with this opportunity now would be the time to do it so that other counties will be able to use this money. But if the board sees this as
What you say the percentage is was?
Eighty-twenty, so. Right now it's at eighty-twenty, it kind of depends on how everything, we had thirty-two point five million dollars, I think there's twenty-eight bridges. In two thousand and eighteen, the same program, thirty-two and a half million dollars funded sixty-six bridges in the state of Iowa.
Can we have those numbers again, right?
What's that?
Twenty-eight and sixty-six?
Right. That's how much projects have gone. And at that time, we got, we replaced three structures using that funding, so we're fortunate that way.
I'll be naive and ask, why would we, why would we be against that?
I would hope you wouldn't, I'm glad, I'm glad that I'm not hearing anybody say that, but I wanted to
Give me the
Right, right now, we took a lot of steps that
And whose money is it, state or tax?
This is federal. This is federal dollars.
This is just a naive layman asking, is there any chance that somebody will step in and do these projects, get started, and they'll take the federal money away, or if it gets this far, it's a sure thing?
No, it's not a sure thing right now.
No, not for you, but the money, whoever gets approved, it's a sure thing.
There is, there is twenty fiscal year twenty twenty-five projects that they have a grant in, in the projects, my understanding is they have not been let yet, and that there is still concern that a possible withdrawal of funds, and this is the same thing, that if, if there would be some sort of a reason in federal government, it may or may not be there.
This would be twenty-six?
Yes.
Duh, okay.
Right, no, but, and the federal year, the federal fiscal year runs from September to October, October to September, excuse me, so it's a little bit later than ours. And then up in, west of Sway City on Highway nine and P sixteen there is a junkyard, people call that the junkyard corner, we have notified the landowner that there is a lot of debris and junk into the road right of way. He has been served papers by our sheriff, and he has an attorney that now has replied. I was there yesterday, it looks like he is starting to starting to clean some things up, however I did see that he has an attorney, and Stephanie Miller from the Cassuth County Attorney's Office is is communicating, I will be talking with Stephanie about this, but it is a problem that Cassuth County's been dealing with for a long time. And I, I wish we wouldn't have to, but we do, and then when attorneys when they have an attorney write a letter, it causes us to reply back to them. Other than that, I think I'm gonna be pretty busy with that grant process. And we have a lot of construction that's starting, so our office is gonna be busy for the next four to six weeks, awfully busy.
Do you have any status update on that tile Gary Anderson called in about? He said he was informed that there had been communication with the city of Sway City, and supposedly they're saying there has not been any communication about that project. What can you give for a status update?
I've talked on the phone. I have not made it up there specifically to talk about that drainage.
With who? With Gary?
With, no, well, I talked with him, yeah. And I've also talked with, is it Monica, the city count, or city clerk?
Alicia.
Alicia.
So it, it's within the city limits. I don't think it's the county's responsibility necessarily to provide drainage to to streets in the city limits, we don't have to go and clean out any kind of curb gutters and different things like that, I just said I would take a look at it, then want to get up there sometime. I haven't had the opportunity.
Okay, so if there's a covert or a cross pipe or anything of that nature, how do we handle that anywhere else? Is that city responsibility or county responsibility when it's on a county road in the city limits?
The jurisdiction of the roadway is Cassuth County's. What is the roadway has always been a question since the bill was written to transfer jurisdictions of farmer market expansions to the cities. Is it the top of the road? Is it the water lines, is it utilities under the road? Is it all the signs? And I, and I told, I've told everybody that I would go up and talk with them and see what is exactly going on, and I have not done it.
Okay, so is the jurisdiction the primary holdup here, or the time to get up there and look at it, or a combination, or?
I would say a combination of both.
Okay.
I do not look at it as a real high priority for Cassuth County Secondary Schools.
Okay.
But I will go up and meet with the city, with city representatives.
Okay.
And that's the way I left it with Alicia.
Alicia or Gary?
Alicia.
Okay. All right.
Thanks Doug.
Sure.
Thank you. Yep, next we've got drainage or air requests.
Did you say you were gonna do this?
No.
Goodness.
Amber, you got a couple, do you want to go first, or?
Yep, yeah, sure, sure. So I have number forty, Nathan Grimm, I had talked to him last week, and I had him call into the office. It's in Plum Creek Township in the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of section thirty-four. There's two spots where there's blowouts within two hundred feet of each other, a ten inch and a twelve inch tile. He wants a temporary fix now. He wants a temporary fix now, but not permanent fix. If too much digging, dodger cracks are out. So I'll talk with him and figure out who we can get to at least go and assess that. And then just let me find my other one. Then number forty-two, it says it's E-PAC DD eighty-four. Fenton Township, Section twenty-two, northeast of the southeast quarter. Actually Nick Rottler, by secondary road filled it out. There's a beaver dam on Black Hat Creek, hundred fifty yards west of the bridge. So I will get in contact with someone to remove that beaver dam. And that's what we usually do, don't we? They just, there's people that like to go in and remove those. So I will find somebody to do that, if that's okay. And then this isn't a drainage repair request, but I will be talking further with Nathan Grimm. He's, and I don't know the process, and maybe you guys can help me with that. I'm going to my messages here on my phone so I can look at it. In DD one fourteen, which is the same this request is from, but anyway, this is different. He says this would be more of an improvement, not a, not a repair. The main open ditch. He says that it's not very deep. And it's been a problem. I think he might have bought the ground from Garrett and Lick Time, and it's been a problem, Gary and Mike Altman. How do I proceed with conversations with Nathan about this? Especially when it does sound like it's an improvement, not a repair?
If he is looking for an improvement, we have a petition form where he could ask for an improvement. And then you just kind of fill out the basic information of what he's looking for. And if there's an area where you can kind of describe the situation or what they would request an engineer would look at. And then once we have the petition here, we put it on the agenda to appoint an engineer. And then they would take it from there, the same process as anywhere other projects. But you'd start with a petition form and I could help you with that.
Petition, okay.
Yep, and I could help you with that a little bit if you need.
Yeah, okay, very good. So I guess that's all I had with that then.
Actually, I think I have that on my computer here. I'll try and find the electronic document of it and send it your way while it's on my mind.
Amber, it's Howard. Or the southeast of the northeast, are we sure that's accurate? Or is it the northeast of the northeast?
Oh, I was going off of the, the writing and not the map. No, here I, you're right now.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not right, it's just a question. So that, I mean, I know a little bit about that ground. That ground's famous, everybody and their dog has owned it over the years and it's a swamp.
Yeah, it's problems evidently. It's, it, yeah.
Okay.
It's not the first, it's not the first time it's been fixed, I believe. What I gathered from Nathan, so.
So in general, this request of temporary fix and come back later, do we do that? I mean, do we make as many trips as it takes? Or do we say we'll fix it and you either fix it now or fix it later?
We have put temporary patches on certain things. I mean, kind of situational dependent. It's not something I would do commonly. But if it's, if it's something where the potential is that it's gonna suck a bunch more dirt or whatever and wash up, then it's, whether it's for environmental or financial reasons, sometimes it makes sense to do that. It, I don't know. I'd say it's situational dependent, but not common thing.
Well, he says he typically gets Scott Mansky to do his timing and repair work. So I'm gonna, I'll, I can reach out to Scott and see what he says. And if after he goes and looks at it. But according to Nathan, it's just not very deep in the ground. And that's part of the issues.
I don't think that part's going away.
Yeah, right, I know it isn't.
And we're, we're sure it's a district tile or whatever?
Well, you mean we're sure if this area is, is?
Yeah.
Well, he called into the office and, you know, they filled out the request form for him. So they evidently found it on the map.
Yeah, it, it should be, never be said double check that.
I haven't been in to verify the map, but, you know, we can do that.
Okay, well, anyway, I'm sure, I'm sure they did, if he called in, yeah.
Yeah, he called it in. I instructed him to do that. Because I think it's easier to do that because they have the map right in front of them when they call in and they can talk about it and find it on the map, so.
My thought process is if this was easy, somebody would have done it, fixed it years ago. This, this is not, this is, somebody knew farming it and thinks they're gonna create a miracle solution. But anyways, enough of that, enough of my opinion, so.
Right. And I don't know if this has to do with, you know, what he's requesting to, as far as the, the main. This is line report forty-one and according to the request for repairs. But evidently there's just more issues than not, why he was kind of requesting, how to go through the process of having an improvement. Okay, Kyle, I got that, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. I, first time I found file, I had a Word doc that showed up a little different format. And then I found the PDF version of it right there next to it. I had to go back and forth in my files a little bit, but, yeah. So it's, the form is fairly straightforward. You lay out the district and general location and stuff. And then there's a section to kind of more commentary of what they're looking for in layman's terms. And then once the engineer receives that, they typically touch base with the board or landowners or both. And then get a firm understanding of what they're looking for and proceed from there, so.
And it takes, how many signatures, two?
Only need one signature from one landowner. It does have to be.
Oh, that's all you need?
It does have to be.
It's pretty nice if you have more than that though, isn't it?
The, the more, the better for, I mean, today was a prime example. The more support you have in general across the district, the easier it is to get the project actually accomplished. So I always encourage people to get as many of their friends, neighbors, other landowners in the district to be supportive of it before it comes to the boardroom rather than after, if they're wanting something to actually be built. But it only takes one signature, but it does have to be an owner. A tenant does not qualify.
Okay. And I, I think he owns the ground.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, thank you for that clarification, yeah. Which makes sense, of course it would have to be because it's the landowners that would pay the bill.
Exactly. So you don't want the tenant that isn't communicating with their landowner running up a twenty thousand dollar engineering bill for the fun of it, so.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Yeah, no, that'd be, that'd be the process and go from there.
Okay, very good.
Kyle, you're up next?
Yep.
Or did you have anything else, Amber?
No, I don't, thank you.
First one in the stack is thirty-eight. This is from Lauren Sikolski, multiple holes in Section nine of Eagle Township. This was already repaired by Anderson Tiling. There's some pictures attached in the folder. Then number thirty-nine is to televise and investigate eighty-four lot eleven for this lawsuit we have currently ongoing. That has already been accomplished right since the excavation and Empire Pike did the televising. Number forty-one is Greenwood, Section seventeen, ten-inch tile plugged with tree roots, we believe. That's for Kenny Lubenthal. It does not, does not show within the drainage district boundaries, but it is on the map as the tile goes there. And that, I think that kind of goes to be explained by what Tyler was talking about earlier this morning as far as these maps being a hundred plus years old in most cases and not always the most accurate. Then forty-three is intake and tile extension for sixty-sub-four. We've discussed that in those completion hearings a little bit. That was a discussion from the original, or the first completion hearing that that work has been completed. Number forty-four is in DD eighty, open ditch, started in Ramsey, Section eleven. Checking the ditch for a possible issue for Steve Birdie. Didn't find anything extreme that really jumped out. So that may need some further investigation or clean out work in the future. But there was, it seemed like there was water being held back previously. There's plenty of water flowing with the rain we had right now, so hopefully that's okay. But it may need some more work in the future. And then number forty-five is in Eagle, Section seventeen for a beaver dam to be removed.
Okay.
That's my stack.
Need a motion for the supervisors to handle their drainage requests. Motion by Haas and I'll second. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimous. Next we've got a discussion with our auditor.
Okay, so next week, we have the public hearing for the voluntary organization in the DD one thirty-three at eight o'clock. At ten o'clock, Elizabeth from Gardner's will be presenting our audits for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. At one o'clock, we have the board workshop for DD four. And that's, and then we also have ICAP cyber liability insurance discussion, approval of wage scale resolution for twenty-six, acknowledged loss transfers. And that should be it for next week. I did, we got the invoice for Iowa District Drainage District Association. And with it was a letter advising that the third annual drainage administrators' meeting is set for Thursday, July seventeenth in Fort Dodge. So I don't know who that applies to. But I have a copy of that here if anybody wants it. That's all the information it gives. It doesn't say where, who needs to go. It just says it has been set for Thursday, July seventeenth in Fort Dodge. So I'm guessing we'll be getting more information about that. Other than that, our office has been extremely busy. We have hired a new maintenance person. They will be starting June thirtieth. We are excited to welcome him to the team. We have put the ad in the paper for a drainage clerk and are getting apps for that. So busy with that. And then I think that's all I have.
Many rapport, it's Howard, any meetings?
I'm not. I'm gonna check in with Tammy to see about last week's department head meeting. And then it got postponed, so I didn't have to. But it sounds like many of them aren't gonna be, be able to come this week too, right?
There are a couple that aren't gonna be able to be here this weekend.
I planned to be here at nine o'clock on Thursday. That's it.
Amber?
I didn't have any meetings or anything. I won't be able to be at the department head meeting. I did send out an email saying that. I have a question though, in regards to when we have some drainage stuff going on and there's like emails being sent, is there a reason why like the whole board isn't copied in some of those? Like when it has to do with the FEMA stuff going on and, and all of the communication that goes back and forth?
So a lot of the FEMA stuff would have been from how that's set up with them for point of contact. And I think you actually would have gotten some of those emails because I don't think it was updated to take your email off after you were auditor four years, four and a half years ago, so.
Actually, the only one I got was the one that I asked about in the meeting. That's the only one I've ever received. And that one I asked about in the meeting and I was told I shouldn't have received it. It had to do with questions about an audit. That's the only one that I ever received.
Okay. I don't know. Typically, those would have been going to our drainage clerk and then dispersed out from there. As needed, but that's, I guess, I don't know that there's any reason they're not going to anyone. It's just how it's been set up in the system.
Okay. All right, we'll just try and, you know, figure out and be as transparent as we can because we have questions out there that says there's bad communication. And, and we answer that we don't really know anything about it. I don't necessarily like that. I'm not saying anything bad's being done, but we don't necessarily know what's going on, so. You know, and with the Drain Four stuff coming on, I just, I had talked to Tammy about it. And I said, I think we need to at least make a statement. And maybe I'll just say it right now, that we are working on things, trying to get things figured out. So I, I mean, I think it's important they know that we're not just kicking the can down the road anymore, that we are in, in fact, working on things. So there you go, I guess I said it.
I agree.
Yeah.
But that's all I have.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I got some, well, I've got several things scheduled. There is a FEMA meeting tomorrow, which I believe Carter was going to. Beyond that, that's for the disaster, the more recent disaster, that he's the only one that has any, any projects in that. And that, I think, is pretty small, pretty simple and straightforward. But I have that on the calendar here. There's been, I guess, thanks to Tammy and her office, there's been a lot of work on the assessments and a lot of drainage things over the last couple of weeks. I've been in the office quite a bit helping answer some questions on that stuff. But there's been a big undertaking there, so just want everybody to understand and appreciate that. There's definitely still work to be done. It's not signed, sealed and delivered by any means or ready for that. But there's a lot of work that has happened already.
In regards to next week or?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to approve things next week to have them done in time for all of our schedules, I believe. So, yeah, it's been a lot of work to get things prepared that way. That's definitely been a project on top of several things. And that's definitely been a project on top of several things, um. I've got a lot of things with CIGBC going on as well right now, um. I don't even know what substance of an update I would have there, but one of our lawsuits, we do have a, I'd say preliminary settlement agreement, it has not been approved by the full commission, but I would anticipate that that would be approved by the full commission at our next meeting, which would be the fourth Friday coming up, so, um, that'll be a little ways out, but I'll talk about that probably more next week as well. But lots of gears turning all at the same time. I don't think that's what I got.
Okay. Um, I did not have any meetings, um, when is that we're supposed to meet up with, uh, Whittemore?
So.
In July.
July, what date is that?
So.
I have that in an email, cause that was one of the things we checked on this last week.
It is, no, it's for, for Whittemore?
Yeah.
It's the fifteenth.
I got some, I believe you, but I got some.
The, the, for the clean out? It, it's the fifteenth at six thirty at.
Fifteenth at six thirty.
Yeah, I was gonna say. I know Melissa pulled that up and found it.
Well, that's what I have.
DD forty, right?
Yeah, that's what I have set to mail out to landowners anyways, so.
Maybe get changed.
Okay. Um, yeah, I had no meetings and Carter looking up before he left that he did not have any meetings as well, so. Um, does Tyler have anything for us?
No, it's for me.
It's for you, okay. All right, I think we're at that portion that, uh, ready for motion for adjournment. Unless anybody has anything else? So, motion by Haas.
Second.
Seconded by Garmin. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Motion carries, we are adjourned at one fifty-five.